I'd like to call the meeting of the Delaware County Commissioners Monday, February 16th, 9:00 AM to order. And we'll have the pledge today given by young men. Matt Madden, interminable, and Ted Ken.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Matt, before you step in, tell us a little about yourself, your rank and service.
I'm a second lieutenant, United States Army. Acted for three years out in Philadelphia. They didn't have any more active slots, so they said, hey, would you like to go home to Indiana? I said, without it now.
And you're IBTAC, Ball State?
Uh, Ball State, yes ma'am.
And you're working in the prosecutor's office?
Yes, ma'am.
Glad to have you today and thank you for your time and your service.
And your support. Thank you. Have a good act.
Thank you. Okay. We do have a roll call. Mr. Craig Craft.
Mr. King. Here. Mr. Henry. Here. Ms. Reagan.
President. Okay, no public hearings today. And we do have a minute from February 2nd that Denise always does a very nice job on.
Make a motion to approve February 2nd meeting. I'll second.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Okay, and today we're going to adjust the presentation to the commissioners just a little bit. We're going to have Mr. John Parker come first to do our liability insurance for us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This year, our insurance will be news again on March 1st. And this year, we had two different carriers offer quotations, which I have sent each one of you commissioners a summary of such. One of the quotations was going to save us approximately $80,000 over this next year. We have made the decision, I believe, to stay where we are because if we made that change, we would be increasing our deductibles from their current lower levels up to $100,000 per insurance item. And at this particular time, I don't want to, I don't think that we want to take that chance. Work is compensation. We're going into the second year of a two-year guaranteed rate program, so there has been no change and the commissioners are well aware as to what our liability is because we assume some of the first dollar risk on that program, which we have done for approximately nine years, which has saved Delaware County somewhere in the area of $794,000. So we're going to have that good year and bad year intertwined. My recommendation to the commissioners would be to stay where we are with the current carrier, which is HHC. They have been very good. They're very good at claims handling. And the increase this year was only 2.5 percent. And considering we raised all our property values by 4 percent, it's basically just flat.
Very good. We thank you for your service and explaining this all to us. We hope to have better news coming across the street. We have some new management in place and I think we're looking a little bit better than we were last year.
Good.
It's a pleasure, commissioners.
Make a motion to stay with HCC, I would agree.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we have Rob Sparks with the Mounds Lake Project. Rob, can you do this in about five minutes, you think?
Probably about three.
Three, okay.
Just a really quick communication with the commissioners. Thank you for having me here today. Over the last week, we've released the results of the Phase Two study on Mounds Lake Project that you guys, I believe, have got connected through your inboxes and email. The executive summary was attached and I think there's a direct link to all the reports on the website. Some of our, rather ours, you take a little bit of time to download. So I would just ask if the commissioners have any questions over the next month as you're looking through those or feel free to call us, email or whatever. And probably we'll be back on the agenda next month to further the discussion about the project. That's all I really have right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Well, we'll go down to contracts and agreements then. The Blue and Company LLC, EMS, and Mr. Rogers.
Good morning, commissioners. I have before you a continued contract with Blue and Company. This is the Medicaid/Medicare reimbursement contract that we've participated since 2011. We met with them last Thursday, I believe it was, and we've got some dates coming as far as when the checks are going to start being cut from Medicaid or Medicare. I would suggest with Mr. Murphy's approval that we continue this contract as it's going to put some money back in the general fund for us.
And are you recommending the flat fee or the contingency fee?
Commissioner Henry sat through that meeting and I kind of leave it up to him to make that decision.
Well, in the meeting, we were assured by Blue and Company that there was, in fact, checks coming. I would, I would like to see us go to just the flat fee of $4,500 for '14, $4,000 for '15, and $3,500 for 2016 versus the contingency fee of 20 percent of the payment limited to $10,000 per year.
Which I believe is what we paid in the past, was $10,000 per year. So this is a significant savings. And the reason for this, as we kind of pressed them, is they're looking to their future and they've had a lot of, not only private services that they're doing work for, but other counties and agencies and cities that have said, hey, look, we haven't gotten our money yet. And certainly I have an understanding of the way the federal government works with FEMA and the pace at which they do. And so I can understand and after some explanation from the Blue and Company representative, I have, I have no doubt that we're going to receive, you know, over half a million dollars probably within the next 12 months, as long as everything comes out through the audit. Now, there is an independent audit that is being done and Commissioner Henry is going to reach out to that auditing company to try to speed that process up. The Blue and Company themselves, from our application, according to the Medicaid/Medicare rule, has 18 months, or I'm sorry, not Blue and Company, but Medicaid/Medicare have 18 months once Blue and Company submits the process for us, which gives that 18 months for the auditor, independent auditor, to do that audit. So they're reaching the end of that audit and Mr. Henry has talked to Blue and Company and assured them that they would reach out. So they're communicating with him on, maybe speeding this process up to get these monies freed up for us. So with that assurance, I feel, I feel comfortable. Commissioner Henry, do you agree?
Yeah, I agree. And I'd make a motion, we accept this contract with a flat fee of $4,500 for '14, $4,000 for '15, and $3,500 for 2016.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you, Jason. Appreciate that. Okay, our next contract is with the Tax Management Associates. And Mr. Carmichael's here to explain that to us.
Good morning, James Carmichael, county assessor. Every few years, the state requires-
James, is that recording?
Is the blue light on?
Good morning. No, it's not. Now it's on. Okay, very good. Every few years, the state requires assessors to inventory real property or real estate. And the same goes for our personal property, which has to do with businesses. And under Indiana Code, the county shall examine and verify businesses for their personal property. And the reason why they require this, because unlike real property, personal property is self-assessed. So they turn in their assessments and we do desk audits and check them for their totals and everything. So this process will be educational for some. It equalizes everything across the board, making it fair and equitable. TMA has assisted Delaware County in the past, in 2002 and in 2007. And they also helped the auditor track down homesteads that were illegal. And the services under this contract are fee-based per audit. So if you have any questions, you've had this for a little while now and I've had Murphy take a look at it and he gave his blessing. So if you have any questions, it'll be out of the time.
Yes, I do have a question.
Sure.
And I apologize to Mr. Murphy, because he's looked these, both these pages over on hers. But on page two, first one on line seven, it says, "All legal costs involving appeals resulting from an audit shall be the responsibility of the county." And then the next, very next line, it says, "The TMA shall defend its audit findings throughout the Indian appeals without additional cost to the county." So that kind of sounds redundant to me.
Well, if the county needs legal representation for anything, it's probably on the county's shoulders, but TMA will be there at all these hearings after the fact and they'll do that for what it says. But I've never had to use any type of legal, any other, it's just in there as a, as a backup, but I've never had to use any other legal cost for that.
It wouldn't be.
It would, but we've never had to go.
And we've been very pleased with this company. I believe they brought in $6 million.
Well, last time they did this program, between 2002 and 2007, there was about $95 million assessed value discovered, which is about $2 million in revenue for the county. So I believe the last time they did it, it was about a 30 percent discovery rate of under-recorded audits or returns.
Mr. Murphy, do you look this over? There's no problems?
I have looked it over. There's no problems. James, I have a question. Paragraph five requires the county to establish a fund.
Okay, sure.
Called the Delinquent Business Personal Property Fund. Has that been established?
Yes, it has. And it's, I believe it still has a balance in it and that's required by the state for the county auditor to supply that fund.
And they probably don't disperse those until the end of the year.
That's correct. Or until, yes, until the end of the program.
I'll make a motion, we accept this contract with TMA.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you, James, and look forward to hearing the good news. Okay, moving on to the second page. Go down to ordinances for first reading, 2015. And Denise, what would that number be? 004. Okay, and that's for the new clerk for copying fees. Mr. King, would you like to come and explain to us?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Indiana Code allows the clerk's office to charge a dollar per page for copies. What you have is an ordinance asking for that increase and placing the funds into the Clerk's Perpetuation Fund to allow us to basically improve our scanning. Documents coming over from the court, it's a never-ending battle.
I'll bet.
Mr. Craig Craft can attest to that. We're about to inherit documents from Yorktown with the closing of their court. So trying to figure out where we're going to store these documents and while we're attempting to get them scanned is another issue that we've got. So we're just trying to improve and get some funds into that perpetuation fund, which is there for document storage and those types of things, retention. So that's, that's basically the request.
Okay, I might ask Mr. Craig Craft, what was the old record? Did we not even have one?
Originally, the statute says you shall charge a dollar unless the commissioners adopt something different. For some reason, it was adopted for a dime.
A dime?
Yeah.
I take to think how long that's filmed and recorded.
It's been probably 10 years ago.
Yeah, the state code was changed in 2004.
And we just weren't kept up on it. Well, I'm glad we're now getting to the time to do something, so it's a pleasure.
I'll make a motion that we introduce for first reading, ordinance number 2015-004.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And when does that go in effect?
We'd have to pass it again at the March 2nd meeting.
March 2nd.
And then we go in effect at that time.
Affecting that time, March 2nd. Okay, we'll look forward to seeing you back March 2nd. Thank you. Okay, now we have resolutions for approval. Resolution 2015-004 approving matters related to development. And it's a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Delaware County, Indiana, approving matters relating to a development agreement with contracts, corporation and bonds associated therewith. And is Mr. Murphy or Mr. Pittman? Mr. Pittman, step to the fore, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. The president of commissioners, I'm Tom Pittman, president of the Barnes and for Ball Farm. The resolution in front of you is sort of in anticipation of the, one of the other resolutions that will be before you this morning. The redevelopment commission is going to be seeking the request for approval of two bond issues, one for Daleville, the other from Morrison Road. The Daleville Tiff District currently has a pledge of Tiff toward a small bond issue that was issued in 2012 to provide an incentive for IBM Corporation and then later its successor, Concentrix Corporation. The bond issue to provide the incentive was for up to $450,000. The ability of the company to access the incentive was tied and continues to be tied to job creation. The financial advisors have advised that this debt be paid off to make room for the new bond issue. In order to pay it off, this, the county has to exercise its rights to pay off the bonds. Because all of the incentive hasn't been drawn and some could still be drawn, you also need to go ahead and draw down the remaining amount that hasn't been drawn. $125,000 of the total, 450,000, has been drawn. It is possible that up to an additional 325 might be earned by Concentrix in the next few years. So we needed to pay off the bond issue, but also keep the funds available to meet the requirements of the incentive. And so this resolution is designed to accomplish that.
Very good. And we appreciate you coming in and filling in for Mr. Bookout, who that was not able to be here today.
My pleasure.
It's a pleasure.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2015-004.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Okay. Now we have 2015-005, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Delaware County, Indiana, approving the issuance of bonds of the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission relating to the Daleville redevelopment area and related matters. So that goes with the other. I don't think we need to have Mr. Pittman answer anything in case you have another question or-
Make a motion, we approve Resolution number 2015-005.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Okay. Now we have Resolution 2015-006, the Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Delaware, Indiana, approving the issuance of bonds of the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission relating to the Morrison Road redevelopment area and related matters. I believe Ms. Moody is here. Would you like to speak on behalf of Mr. Bookout?
Sure.
That couldn't be here to fill us in. He assured me that you would say good sir.
Oh, okay, okay. Marta Moody from the Plan Commission Office. And I have been working with the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission for actually several years, but recently, the last few months, we have revived the sidewalk project for the Morrison-Tiff area. That has been a project that was really envisioned along with the road improvements in the original redevelopment plan. But as has happened so often in the past, when they were doing the road projects, like for Morrison and Bethel, they cut the sidewalks out of it. And so now we're finally back to the place where we're going to be completing those streets and this is a necessary step to achieve that. We have a firm, actually a team of consultants that are currently working on the network as to where the sidewalks and pathways will be located. And they are not quite done with that. Once they figure out the pathways for all of these walkways, they'll be doing cost estimates and will be able to continue to move through the process.
And we had a very nice explant at the re-commission. And it's in phases one, two, and three.
Yes.
Right now, we're just looking at phase one.
Right.
And you want to give some of the roads that are going to be involved in phase one?
Yeah, phase one will deal with Morrison and Bethel and Chatham. And actually Bethel, we recently talked Bethel from Morrison to Tillotson, actually. So it will go the full length and not necessarily on both sides. We've looked at the maps for the area and in some cases, for example, Bethel from, from the 332 Bethel-Chatham intersection east to Tillotson, we talked about doing a very wide, possibly, if possible, an eight-foot path just on the north side, which would also be going along the north side of the ball fields at Ball State. And it would connect with the new walkway that's on the west side of Tillotson. So we're, we're starting to build and complete a network. The other roads would be those within the commercial area of Lindenbrook Place, including Fox Ridge and the north-south streets. Those will also help to complete the sidewalk system that was started with the walkway that was put in on the north side of Purdue.
And the consultants assured us that, they've been sitting out there and watching the traffic, the walking traffic. And many of you will know that out there by Walmart and Walgreens, that will be taken care of for this project too.
Right.
And that, and the bike paths of the eight foot.
Yes. And one thing I forgot that's very important, one of their charges, the consultant's charges, is to also connect to the commissioners' project on Morrison Road, where they installed the eight-foot path on the east side of Morrison. And so one of their charges is to plan and create a safe crossing for pedestrians on 332 McGahyard from the north side of McGahyard to the south side to connect up with that, that pathway.
Okay, thank you for filling in for Mr. Bookout.
Make a motion to approve Resolution number 2015-006.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Okay, then we have Resolution 2015-007, the Resolution of Approval for the 2014 Changes to the Official Zone Maps for Delaware County, Indiana. And then Marta's again.
Yeah.
She's a busy lady.
Yeah, Marta Moody. And this is an activity that we do at the beginning of every year and it is just a mechanism that's set out in the zoning ordinance that assures that the zone map changes get incorporated into the official zone maps. And so these reflect those changes that were adopted by the commissioners in 2014. And it's a lot easier to do this now that we have digital zone maps. You know, some time back, they were, it was all done by hand, but now it's digital. And so as you can see from the materials that were filed with you, there were two rezonings that were done in the county. And so this is a resolution just endorsing those changes and acknowledging that they have been incorporated correctly into the zone maps. The Plan Commission reviewed and approved this at their February meeting earlier this month.
I did have a question on this, was that north or south of 332?
North.
Was it north? Okay.
Make a motion to approve, sorry, Revolution 2015-7.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you, Marta. Okay. Department heads, let the officials, anyone?
Yeah. We've had these sitting on the counter for a few weeks now, but this is just a building permit report for you. And I had Kimberly put together sort of a three-year comparison so that you could-
Do you want me to get the microphone?
Yeah, a three-year comparison so that you could see, get a feel for what this 2014 data means. And if you notice, the number of projects, 2013 to 2014, were almost identical, but the amount of money that was collected is quite a bit more. And that's because we did do an increase for the permit fees. And so that sort of, it shows you the results of, of that increase. And the 2012 figures, those reflect numbers prior to the consolidation of Mount Pleasant Township with Yorktown.
Okay. We're not quite there yet, but we are, we're in 2013.
Yeah. And I think really, if we had a comparison that goes earlier than 2012, you would see that the number of permits, particularly in new dwellings, has gone up. So, you know, it's-
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and effort. Okay, anybody else?
Good morning, Commissioner Jason Rogers, Director of Emergency Management. First on EMS, I've got the write-offs through the month-end report of 131 of 15. Our total write-off amount would be $418,497.26. Denise, I'll have these, I've got these copied for you as well. Our invoices for the month was, were $771,690.71. Our payment was $262,249.23, which leaves us a balance forward of $1,68,944.37. So I would need a request of motion to accept the write-offs as read.
Salute.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. And one more item of interest on a much somber note. The Emergency Management Agency lost one of its members Friday evening. Frank Thomas, who was an original member of Citizens Corps, the CERT team, our current SRT team, and his service to the county dates back to civil defense. Frankie was a maintenance supervisor, I think, at Baltimore Hospital for 20-some years and has been an invaluable member of our team. He brought a lot of fun with him when he came. He always had a big barbecue a couple times a year. So we are very sad that he lost his battle with some illness on Friday evening. So we will be memorializing him with representation at his service, as well as, there's some discussion about making a volunteer service award in his name, so I wanted to report that to you.
Sorry for your-
Thank you.
I was very proud to see the CERT staff, volunteers at the Walk a Mile in their nice yellow uniforms.
Yes, we had several, several members and they raised, they raised a lot of funds as well for, for that cause.
And I was jealous that you were riding around in our new piece of equipment.
We were, yeah, I was covering for one of the paramedics because we were short of that.
Real quick, Jason, I think everybody knows the scene in the paper, Delaware County had that 30-car pileup out on the interstate. I listened to that whole thing with EMS and EMA and our sheriff's department. And we should all be proud of our emergency service.
And we should all be proud of our emergency services that went out there to that crash because you guys did an excellent job.
Thank you. It was, it was very much a challenge. And I can't say enough about the teamwork between the Township Fire Departments, the Indiana State Police, NDOT, our EMA staff. I mean, everybody that was out there absolutely followed our chain of command and worked flawlessly together. It was very much a cooperative effort. And I would, I would say that it was very much a success as far as that is concerned. So, thank you.
I would say so, too. Thank you. And thank everybody.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, we have payments applied. It was $763,251.06.
Make a motion, payment of claims in the amount of $763,251.06.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Okay, do we have any questions or comments? We want to keep things very brief here and not rehash. Steve Field.
Hi, Steve Fields. Want to, I was going to pass out some statutes for you. I talked to you before regarding some of your fiduciary duties.
I think, Mr. Fields, can you... Steve, do we have to listen to this?
No, every, every meeting, we have to listen to this. I think he should keep it very short and sweet.
Yeah, well...
No names?
Okay. Again, the windmill that we didn't receive and the overpayment on the...
Sir, sir, listen, we've heard this over and over again. I'm not going to sit here and listen to it anymore.
Okay. Well, then, read your statutory duties.
I'll do that.
Why'd you run for office if you didn't argue for your statutory duties?
Okay, anybody else? Thank you, Steve.
Yeah. I just have a short question. On these, the $700-some thousand...
Please state your name.
My name is Tom Terry. And on the $700-some thousand we just approved, did, were those audited by one of you?
For what item? The, the write-offs for the insurance?
No, the amount we just approved, it's for...
Claim voices.
Oh, the claims. Oh, yes. Here again, I didn't sit down and look through every claim, but...
Do you have a certain claim that you're asking about?
You're welcome to.
No, no, I don't have a certain claim, but, and I'm not going to refer to what he has to say at all, but that auditing those claims very carefully takes a lot of time, I know, lots of time.
We have a staff.
And that is one of the most important responsibilities of the commissioners. And...
I, I, I'll fill you in on something that I did start, is now that I'm having the highway claims come up to our office before we take them down to the auditor. I am looking at those. I will admit that. Mr. Krecraft, would you like to fill Mr. Terry in on the staff that you have and how proud you are of them?
We do personally look at every claim.
And you have to sign off on...
I said what Mr. Richmond did this last week. And then, we started submitting to the commissioners the Wednesday before.
Wednesday before.
To give you extra time to review them.
And I, I actually come in every morning, and I'm actually here before Patty gets here. And I will sit down, claims and everything's on my desk, and I actually go through the claims. A lot of the stuff is maintenance repairs, you have payroll that we have to do, you know, there's a lot of things. And I actually come in every morning before this meeting and go through those claims. So, I mean, it's, there one certain claim, you know, we've, we've heard about pickup trucks that was purchased before we were even here. That's one thing I do, I make sure that there's no pickup truck in there. There was also a windmill that was stated. None of us purchased the windmill. I would not purchase the imaginary windmill that you guys are talking about. You have a set of commissioners up here that we are going to do our due diligence to make sure that stuff like this does not go through. We do actually look to claims. One of the other things that we do do with the redevelopment commission, with the chamber, our economic team, we actually sit down, we look at these businesses now that they want to bring in or they talk about bringing in. We want to do the best for our community and for the citizens around here not to do some of the mistakes that happened in the past. To me, this happened in the past. It did not happen during our stint, okay? We work our tails off. A lot of people don't understand, but we just don't come up here and sit for 30 or 40 minutes in these meetings. I spend a lot of time away from home in a lot of meetings. If you want to ask, you know, ask my wife, because at times, I'm hardly ever home. Sometimes when I am home, I am getting calls from the citizens about certain things that in return, that I have to take care of because that's my duty. That's the reason why I ran for office. Some of the stuff that you've sent us, yes, I have read. I also know people to where you guys have sent some of these documents, too, that I've actually discussed some of this with. But I'm not going any farther with this, okay? Do you understand?
I understand.
And what bothers me is we have a set of commissioners that was not sitting on this board in 2012, but we are getting blamed for something that happened in 2012 or prior to this. What I would like to do, I want to move on with the future, because if I live in the past, this county and myself, we are not going anywhere if we live in the past. I want to move on with the future. Every, one of these documents and everything, I read. That's another reason why sometimes my wife wants to kill me for running for office, because I sit down and I actually read. My reading's not as good as what it used to be because now I have to wear glasses. But I also contact our attorney, Mr. Murphy here, and get his legal opinion on it, on everything. We're doing our due diligence for this community, us three that's sitting up here, you know, and it really bothers me anymore that I have to sit here and continue to listen to a truck that I had nothing to do with. You, you, you know where I'm going, Mr.?
Absolutely, I understand.
You know, I have nothing to do with the truck. I have nothing to do with the imaginary windmill, wherever it's at. I mean, I, I don't know, maybe Santa Claus has it up there, you know, and he's running his little place. I have no idea where it's at, but I had nothing to do with it. But what I am doing now, I'm doing the best I can for this community, you know, and I sat and talked to you. I don't think I've led you astray or anything. But I am going to read stuff, you know, and at times, yes, I will form my opinion on things. But I'm tired of hearing stuff about the past.
And what, I don't want to be bringing up the past. In fact, I'm going to stop bringing up the past and, and look to the future. Sometimes we have to look to the past in order to correct the future. And if we don't do that, we have a problem. And what I just, I'm going to change my format. And what I'd like to do is start emailing you guys instead of standing up here and complaining and starting to send...
That's a good idea.
...these contracts, the one I just gave you, I've already given to the other two commissioners, and I'm going to email you and tell you my thoughts. But I'd like for you to read them and see if you see a conflict. And the only other thing I was going to ask you, you guys are bonded, right? The commissioners are bonded. If somebody makes a mistake, a real flagrant mistake, we're bonded, right?
Right.
And the only thing I was looking at, some of these past things that may be their bonded, we can still get back some of that money, possibly. I want you to think about that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else entertain a motion for recess?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes, thank you.